Well, good evening. And hang on, we have multiple devices here. Good evening. We'll convene our Special Board of Education Open Session at 7:01 PM. The roll call is, we are all in our places with bright smiley faces. And Maritza Travanti will lead us in the pledge.
Okay. And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comments. Ms. Huff, do we have any comments for any items that are on the agenda?
Yes, Board of President Hammond, we have a few comments tonight. I'll start with the first one. First one comes from Jason Willoughby. Mr. Willoughby writes, I would like to comment that when considering school reopening and a hybrid or distance learning model, there be specific plans for the following important issues. Specifics on how the district will address the attendance and student work accountability for the new school year. With the previous hold harmless approach, there was no requirement for teaching practices, student attendance, completion of work, or instructional feedback. Specifics on how the district will provide Tier Two and Tier Three intervention for those students who require it. Specifics for how the district will address the unique learning plans for those in dual immersion programs. With this program needing exposure to new language as well as verbal practice with the new language, the success of the dual programs cannot be effective for less than a traditional school day with five-plus hours a day, five days a week. By literacy, by the end of the third grade is not achievable. Specifics on how we can meet the language and content needs of our English learners, including but not limited to universal access time, integrated ELD instruction, and designated ELD instruction. Specifics on how the district will provide equity and access for all learners, specifically our BIPOC students. Historically, the BIPOC students have not been treated equitably academically, socially, emotionally, behaviorally, and technologically. A plan should include measures to address this issue. Thank you for your service, Jason Willoughby. The next public comment comes from Kelly Greer. Ms. Greer writes, good afternoon. First, I want to thank the teachers, administrators, and staff for all they did last trimester and all they continue to do. These challenges are unprecedented, but we are resilient. As our district looks toward distance learning, whether full-time or half-time, I want to inquire about how parents can provide feedback before teachers and administrators are making decisions and curriculum plans. We have a lot of useful feedback from our experience with distance learning in March through June and want to make sure our concerns and suggestions are heard. I do not think the survey form is adequate. There should be public forums by school or by grade to discuss. I would also like to advocate for parents who speak English as a second language, older caregivers who are not tech savvy, lower-income families who may not have ease of access, and others. I want to make sure that every effort is made for their voices to be heard, their needs addressed. I hope any committees formed will have representation from families in each grade, school, income level, race, special needs, et cetera. Let's not do school just to do school. Let's do it right and be leaders in this. MUSD can be an example to other districts in compassionate, effective, inclusive, and safe learning for all families. Sincerely, Kelly Greer.
Thank you, Ms. Greer.
The next public comment comes from, I actually don't know, they didn't leave a name, but it's mgorthe@gmail.com. What's going to happen with the athletics for the schools? I hear all this talk about safety for the kids, but what has been done and is being done to protect them from school shootings? Statistically, more kids have died from that than the virus. Going on safety again, I'm hearing that things may not be back until a vaccine is available. With that said, why has nothing been done, safety protocol-wise, for the flu? Last I checked, and I am 46 years old, there is no vaccine for the flu. Why are the decisions not being made by Monrovia District? Why is everything through LAUSD? Monrovia School District can make these decisions away from LAUSD, so why aren't you? Safety again, Monrovia and every other city in the nation has allowed protesting to happen and have allowed it to happen, yet schools are having this issue to reopen. Why? Can't say it's safety because we saw firsthand Myrtle shut down with hundreds of people protesting and not social distancing, yet none of the schools could have a proper graduation ceremony. Why? And... The... Two more.
Thank you.
The next one comes from Tyler Hendry. Mr. Hendry writes, my experience with my younger child in school is that the distance learning program was inadequate in educating my son. I feel, excuse me, I feel that this was online purgatory for him with endless busy work. I would like to hear an honest assessment of accomplishments and shortcomings from the board and teachers on the distance learning program that concluded the year 2019-20. I have two children, one who excels in school and one who struggles in school. The one who excelled in school was very bored with the distance learning program and often felt pressure to give answers to other students who contacted her regarding her classes. The one who struggles would often spend hours sitting at the computer without accomplishing the work and wasting a significant portion of the day because he needs interaction to stimulate him to engage in his work. I feel that the distance learning program was substandard for both of my children. How would the board and teachers adapt to both of these situations? If the school board chooses to do distance learning for the school year, what changes will be made to reduce the mental health, cyberbullying, and online predation risk these children will face? There has to be a way that parents can have the option, excuse me, there has to be a way that parents can have the option of sending their children to school for the regular hours safely, especially for those that need to work. If a one-size-fits-all approach is implemented with distance learning, how does the school board justify their salaries if they are merely parroting the stance of LAUSD, especially in light of the fact that other school districts across the country and in other nations have found a way to have students at school? And that is from Mr. Hendry.
Thank you, Mr. Hendry.
The last public comment comes from Brooke Hendry. Ms. Hendry writes, statistics show COVID-19 is less, not zero, of a risk than the flu for children. As well, it has been documented in other countries that there was little to no effect on the number of cases for countries who allowed schools to remain open. We have all seen what has become of our children, who literally have no voice in this debate. Over the past few months, depression is up, online bullying is up, suicide rates are up, online predators are flourishing, et cetera. Is this decision being based on our children's needs and health or being pushed by teachers' unions like LAUSD? If it is truly based on the needs of our kids, then it is clear that we need to have school on campus with in-person instruction. If it is a matter of older teachers' health concerns, I have a recommendation. Teachers 50 and under with no underlying health issues may be allowed on campus to teach in person to students with social distancing, masks, et cetera. Those who are older may be a mentor teacher to a younger, new, or less experienced teacher, called in to instruct their class on their behalf. They can have planned lessons remotely and give instructions that will be relayed by the interim teacher. You may wonder where we'll find these new teachers. I volunteer. I'm sure other people will as well. I have five years' teaching experience with LAUSD. Furthermore, I like to make every class viewable to students who can remote and off-campus. I have other suggestions that I'm willing to share if I'm given a voice to be heard. And that is from Ms. Brooke Hendry.
Thank you, Ms. Hendry. And that was the last of the comments?
That is the last.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody sending their thoughts into the board. We do listen to what you say. I'm sure some of the questions that were asked, you'll hear in the discussion on the action item that's going to be coming. We'll close the public comment meeting and we'll take up the action item approving an instructional model for a school year 2021. Dr. Terosian.
Thank you, President Hammond, members of the board. You may be wondering why we're bringing this discussion about instructional models back up with the board after having presented about multiple models and in forms of instruction last week on Thursday and Friday during those webinars. Ms. Huff, would you go to the next slide? Last week, we spoke briefly about the traditional model, which is what we all hope to be able to do one day. We miss our students. We miss children in our buildings. They are empty without them. And we understand that we can't do that safely. Distance learning is where we ended last school year, and so that model has been identified, though not formulated to its broadest extent. And we have our independent study program, which we presented at a previous board meeting. The bulk of the time last week, we spent discussing a hybrid model of learning where fewer students are on campus and there are mitigation strategies through which students are safely taught in school. It's a model that doesn't exist and that our task forces identified in order to find a way, if we're allowed to come back to school in person, where we have fewer students and we have some in-person instruction. It really is why many of us went into teaching in the first place. We like kids. Ms. Huff, next slide. It's not just the American Academy of Pediatrics that strongly advocates for all students to return to school. It was also the Assembly Bill 77 that stated very clearly, a local educational agency shall offer in-person instruction to the greatest extent possible. And therefore, our task force spent a great deal of time crafting a model that would best work for families, for students, taking into consideration the multiple surveys that were sent out to identify something that was viable. That said, we did not spend a great deal of time on a distance learning model should we need to begin the year with 100% distance. And therefore, we focused most of our time on creating that new structure. Things have changed. Yesterday, we listened to the Director of the Department of Public Health in Los Angeles, Dr. Barbara Ferrer, who said, be prepared for 100% distance learning. Governor Newsom commended LA Unified for making that decision yesterday. The reason that statement is very important is because that suggests that our funding will not be impacted if 100% distance is the course of action that this board takes. And so today, I'd like to spend just a little more time discussing what we learned yesterday and what that 100% distance learning would look like in the fall. Ms. Huff, next slide. We have seen numbers spike in terms of the LA County Daily COVID-19. July 9, these were the numbers. And then the next slide, Ms. Huff. You see how the numbers are simply growing exponentially. This is a concern, and it has been a concern now since the Fourth of July, I think, is when the biggest concerns began to emerge. And now, the concerns about the growth and spread of the coronavirus continuing. Next slide, Ms. Huff. Also yesterday, in the afternoon, the LA County Department of Public Health issued guidance to school districts about reopening plans. Schools must implement every one of the 13 pages that I had the pleasure of reading last night about safety protocols, school teams, and the measures we would be taking to prevent and contain the spread of COVID-19 on campus. And I want to say that our school teams have begun working on those strategies. They have begun working on designing classrooms and developing new schedules for cleaning and disinfecting. However, we do not have school-level teams. We don't have, much of our staff has gone home for the summer. And so establishing and enforcing safety protocols, given the skeletal proof that we have right now, would not be possible. So I provide this simply as larger context of, there's some additional compliance pieces we'd like to be able to follow because we do want to reopen in as safe a manner as possible. Next slide. In July, a question was asked during the survey, in that survey, if public health will allow us to reopen schools as usual, would you prefer to maintain a remote learning experience for your child? And in that survey, approximately 36% of our parents stated that they would prefer the remote learning. Now, this is an interesting piece. Can you, next slide, please, Ms. Huff? Oh, this also will pose some challenges because we still have some families out there without access to Wi-Fi or to a device. Next slide. Simply providing you with the numbers. This is something we need to address regardless of the model we use, and this information is something that we will follow. Next slide. In May, we asked the same question. At that time, 284 of our respondents said that they would want to continue with distance learning. And in many of the comments, what we read was that there were concerns about the distance learning in the spring, that it was not necessarily meeting the needs of their children, and they had hoped for a more robust approach. Now, that survey was distributed at the end of May. In the beginning of July, really, just over a month later, 892 of the 2,623 respondents say that they would like to continue with distance learning even if we have any other model. And a common comment there again is, they are interested in seeing more interactive distance learning and greater feedback about student progress and to have a more dynamic approach to the teaching and learning process. I suspect some of those surveys were completed prior to the Fourth of July weekend because I've received, and perhaps some of you have as well, some emails from parents saying that they'd like to change their response because they had said that they want their children back in school. For the parents listening, I want to assure you yet again that this was simply a survey. You were not registering your child for one model or another. This was simply providing us with continued guideposts for us to continue our planning. Next slide. As we began working on a distance learning model, we developed some areas that we wanted to make sure to highlight and to provide a little more information and expectation around in order to make sure that it is clear. Some increased accountability about student attendance, about grades, about the structure and schedule for the day so that students have something that they can fix and then pivot to when the day comes that we can welcome them back onto our campuses. A continuity of services to students with special needs, to our English learners, to our foster youth, to our homeless. We need to make sure that our most vulnerable learners are provided the support they need. Need to make sure to maintain the instructional minutes required by State California. And we need to make sure to provide professional development resources to support the distance learning and teaching. We also will commit to regular communication with parents and guardians. Now, one of the first things that this board did when the pandemic began to emerge as problematic and impacting our lives, we realized that we did not have a clear source of communication with parents. In fact, parents were accessing multiple platforms in order to get information about school depending upon where their children attended school. So you might be going to OnTheRemind, or Constella, or something else. What we did was invest in a communication platform, Parents Square, through which all formal communication on campus, from class, and from the district will be delivered to parents through the format of their choice, whether it's email, whether it's text. And the surveys that we've distributed have gone all through Parents Square. This is one way to streamline communication and to make access to information more efficient. Next slide. Now, I mentioned Assembly Bill 77 as part of the budget trailer bills that identified in-person instruction to the greatest extent possible as a mandate. See that that has changed. However, in distance learning, they also identify some clear expectations that will be taken into consideration as we develop each of the areas I referenced earlier. In the guidance, in the language, it says specifically that content will be aligned to grade level standards and that the rigor will be equivalent to in-person instruction. The support will be designed to address the needs of pupils not performing at grade level. So you see that the distance learning is being crafted to reflect the supports, the rigor, and the relationships that we are expecting now from our in-person instruction. And daily live interaction with certificated employees and peers for purposes of instruction, progress monitoring, and maintaining social connectedness as feasible. Next slide. Last week, we presented the work of the task force comprised of representatives from departments to determine our internal capacity, were we to be able to offer a hybrid model of in-person teaching. Parents were not included as they would not have known any of our internal processes or really the compliance pieces with which we need to adhere in order to make sure that as an organization we continue to move forward. However, we would like parents to participate in the next steps of this process as we establish schedules and not only at the district level, but at the school level. Next slide. Subcommittee's will be in terms of instructional schedules. Now, this is for both the distance model and the hybrid model. Planning and instruction, a little more about professional development and feedback. Establishing screening and communication protocols for both staff and students. And this is specifically regarding COVID-19. Establishing cleaning and disinfecting schedules, again, for hybrid and distance learning. We are essential workers. We are very capable of being in our classrooms whether or not our students are in school. And those protocols need to be in place for the safety of our children. We need to refine the dual immersion support that we offer, the special education support, and the English learners. Indeed, when we talk about some of these additional supports, there are ways to provide... Oh, next slide, I think I included in the next slide. Well, I could talk a little bit about professional development, but we'll come back to it. We have already begun working on a menu of professional development offerings for our team so that we better meet the needs of our students with some of the technology and the crafting of lessons. Instruction specialists have begun working on those based upon the feedback that they received from teachers saying they are interested in more information and practice. Offerings will begin on the third of August. Not all staff members return to school for another couple of weeks, but the offerings will be available online. And, you know, our teachers are the first source of information and our teaching and learning. But we have just a team of dedicated parent professionals, our classified staff, our instructional aides, who are incredibly important to the process of learning when we are in person and we need to provide them with the support and resources they need in order to further the learning of the students in class. Next slide. We're also very concerned about student wellness, mental health. The counselors, the psychologists, the mental health services, we are developing access and will communicate process for outreach as soon as it is entirely crafted for our distance learning as well as our hybrid models. But we have been working very hard to develop something more robust and even than we have in the past. As some of our partners are listed here. Those that are not include our community partners. Just today, I was contacted by a specific university asking if there was a need for some additional counseling services and if they'd be willing to work with them. Of course, I said yes. The more resources we have for our students, the better. Next slide. I have been asked some questions. I want to be able to address them here just very quickly. How will services be provided to students? Support providers will work closely with families to develop a safe delivery of in-person and teletherapy. Now, when discussing special education, there may be opportunities where safe protocols are followed and we can have in-person support. Will there be sports? We continue to await an announcement by CIM, and that will be on July 1. At this point, in the guidance from the Department of Public Health, it was very clear that there will be no teen athletics at this time. Will I be prepared to go to college? Now, we have our rising seniors. I want to assure them that the registration with the counselors will continue as the years pass, and it'll be online. It will still be an opportunity, not just for our rising seniors, but for all of our high school students, to review your progress, look at your four-year plan, identify supports that you might need in the future, simply work, partner with the counselors so that you have the best start to the next school year. College admissions, applications, financial aid, scholarships, the support that the counselors have provided in the past will absolutely continue. Of course, the method through which that is done is yet to be determined. And will there be meal services? And that is an affirmative. And yet another thank you to the very incredible MUSD Conserve's team who was just persistent in making sure that families and students had the meals that they needed daily. Next slide. That was the easiest slide, except if you ask any... That was the easiest slide, except if you ask any.
Uh, uh, any questions of Kathy or comments?
Uh, yes, I do. Dr. Terosian, um, during the webinars that we held, oh, there were a total of three webinars in English and also one held, um, in Spanish. I understand that there was a long list of questions added to those webinars, asked by parents and guardians, um, and other emails that were sent to the email address that wasn't established. What is the timeframe for consolidating those questions and then posting them to our website?
That will be done this week.
Okay, thank you.
And also allow me to, to thank those who joined us as well as those who offered questions and comments. Uh, please know that we are working through them. We, we had almost 1,200 participants and, um, many, many questions. We simply weren't able to answer them all in time.
Selene.
Um, thank you. Ms. Wu, are you here? I think I saw that you were here.
Yeah.
Hi Connie.
Hi.
I have a question and I don't expect you to be able to answer it on the spot. Um, but if you could get us an answer, I'd like to know, um, in one of the slides, we talked about the financial impact of the COVID protocols um, to make the schools safe if we were physically there. Do you have a, a rough idea now, or can you get the answer for us later of the financial impact of that? The disinfecting, the hours to disinfect, the P P Es, et cetera?
Um, Mr. Locati, um, I don't have a detail what, how much it will impact us, but I do know that, um, we will in, increase costs for purchase of various supplies, including the disinfecting machine. And, uh, the custodian will do a multiple cleaning with the kids come to campus. And there's a possibility that we either increase custodians' hours or, um, hire more people to do the disin, uh, 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 factor, um, cleaning. Also, we, we need to buy, maybe buy a lot of supplies and, uh, supplies, including the plastic glasses, efficiency shared. Shared. So, um, those, um, financial impact part of the care money allows us to spend on those, um, the, um, school closure and COVID-19 related costs.
And, and that's, um, money that we have to spend by December of this year, correct?
That's correct. That is a guideline, but I think if the school dismissal continue when we open our school on August 19th, and it's my personal thoughts that if there's no kids on campus, then I think the, the government need to give us extend the deadline.
Extend the deadline of spending the care money?
Uh, yeah, that's my personal thoughts because, because, you know, I'm pretty sure, uh, there's a lot of money come to each school district and then we don't have kids on campus. Um, then the, the spending is, um, um, you know, not as, uh, much as we already sought when the school fully open. So, um, I, I anticipate that there should be some, you know, new guideline come out soon. If a lot of school district, um, give a feedback for our county of education, for our, uh, the California Department of Education, how this money, you know, deadline is coming and there's a, um, we, we should be prudent for, because of this budget situation, we want to really prudent for every dollar we have.
Right. So, so it's your belief that if we don't return physically on August 19th, that the state, it's the state, right?
Um, it's a state and a federal because, yeah.
Extend the deadline of spending that care money so that we can be more prudent with it and use it more effectively if, when we do return to campus, if we don't return to campus physically on August 19th, correct?
That is my anticipation. Uh, there's no guideline, uh, talk about, uh, and, uh, extended funding sources because the weather, the, the school open remotely changes. It's just happened yesterday because of the surge in, in, in Southern California or, or 31 county of the California. So things change, um, every day. So if this continue, then, um, I personally anticipate, but I will keep up board informed what is the guideline and it is any possibility to extend, uh, for, for spending of the care act money.
And how would we go about, who, who would advocate for that? Is that something you would do, the board would do, or someone outside of the district would do?
Um, I think it's a, um, combination of various, uh, you know, sources and the district definitely will, um, voice our concern to the county of education and we probably will share with the, the C D E. And the board can have, uh, you know, your voice to share for the, for the assembly or Senate office. So, so that's why we, the bottom line, we need to use the limited resource we have. And as, um, as much product as possible, we know that if the, if the governor order re-closer for business, it's going to be another impact for statewide budget. So bottom line is going to impact our district. So, so my personal is saying that, um, we just need, and I know the, the superintendent, I know our board, we just need to do our judicial duty, make sure that we spend our money, limited resource wisely. We will have a challenge, um, down the road because the, the economy project that this, um, recession will be extended either 2022 or 2023.
Thank you Connie, and I'm sorry I asked you a question that you clearly.
That's my pleasure. I, I should, uh, it's, it's my responsibility and duties.
Thank you.
Brian.
Uh, thank you, Rob. Um, okay, so, you know, clearly this is an area that nobody has really experienced before. Um, I think there's a lot of different feelings on how we need to proceed. Even as, um, the virus continues to get worse and worse, I mean, we're at all-time high levels. There seems to still be 60% based on the last survey who still want a hybrid type of service. Now that probably is dropping, um, every day. As it gets worse and we all experience people who are, who are running into problems. Um, you know, but nonetheless, you know, I look at this as, as both parties, people who want some type of a hybrid and people who are looking at 100% distant learning, um, are, there's a lot of both. I, I, I think the only thing we can agree on is that we're not going to start school in a normal, traditional way. So my concern, the board's concern as a whole, I think, is we have 30 days, precious few days to figure out the best way, uh, to start the school year. Um, and as I'm looking at, uh, the many questions, 100-plus questions from our last, um, webinar as to what's going on, the questions from today, uh, I, or comments before we started the meeting, I, I think those are all incredibly valid questions. And so my questions really uh, pertain to regardless of we do 100% learning or whether we have a hybrid, there are some major questions, uh, that I think parents need to know. The board needs to address in some manner. One of them is going to be childcare, whether it is a hybrid system or whether it's long-term 100% learning. Uh, there's a multitude of parents that are going to struggle to figure out what to do with their children. Um, there's many parents out there who are struggling with how to teach their children. We may be great parents, but some of us don't have the patience that's required, uh, to teach their kid every day from home. Um, we have a population, um, that are already behind and I think are going to be even farther behind unless they have far more, uh, direct, uh, contact uh, to keep them on track. Um, in, in the last one that, that really, I think we need to spend some time on is our dual immersion programs. Um, either way, and I thought it was brought up, uh, as one of the comments at the beginning, is the amount of time that's required for interaction for this program to be successful. So I, I would love to have the dialogue on those, those topics. Uh, I'm, I'm sure we could talk all night just on those, uh, let alone some of the, some of the, uh, other things that have been brought up. Um, the reason I want to focus on those is, it's going to pertain to either model that we use. Uh, the, the one thing that, as, as we're going through a lot of this, that I don't know that we've, um, weighed in enough on is our, uh, teachers and staff. Where, uh, LA and San Diego has said that they're basically not going to show up. That's not been the case for our particular employees. Uh, and they've been far more willing to see what the game plan is before they do anything. And they've truly been working with us, uh, on how, how to develop this. And I want to make sure that, uh, the parents are understanding they're being part of the solution. Um, so I'm not sure which way we want to go and how you want to do these questions, uh, or whether we want to go by topic or what is the best way? Um, Rob, uh, uh, I guess you get to direct on, uh, uh, how, how we go. So that, that's my opening comment for now and I look forward to starting it off.
Well, thanks, Brian. Uh, Ed, do you have some, a comment?
I, I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions for Dr. Throsian. Um, number one is so many people are making this into a, a political issue when I'm pretty sure there's not a member of this board that, that will look at it from a political standpoint. This is, you know, our charter from the people of Monrovia is to educate the children of Monrovia and do it in a safe manner. And that's our only interest tonight. I'm, I'm pretty sure that I can speak that for the whole board, absolutely mine. Have no interest in the political games that are being played over COVID-19. All we need to do is to decide what is the best way that we can educate our students during this time that COVID-19 is ravishing California. Uh, uh, politics aside, we have to make sure our kids are safe. A week ago, we felt as a district of teams that are working on it, felt that we could meet, uh, as, as my understanding, Dr. Throsian, a week ago, we felt we could meet those 13 pages of, of guidelines in a safe manner in order to put a hybrid model, uh, together for this fall semester. It, it, am I right in that? Is, is that what our team said? We could do that for a hybrid model?
Just one clarification, tho, those 13 pages did not exist a week ago.
Okay, so those are brand new. And how many of those pages did exist a week ago? That's not 13 whole new pages of new stuff.
Oh yeah, it's, it's new.
Every, every page, every item on every page is new?
What we were using prior to the, uh, the development of those pages was guidance from the California Department of Public Health, uh, from, uh, Harvard School of Public Health. We were using guidance and recommendations from outside sources, but not any from, uh, the count, from Los Angeles Department of Public Health because it didn't exist.
Okay, so I'm sure, I'm sure many of their recommendations, um, mimic what Harvard and CDC and W H O and whoever else is involved say. Uh, but what I hear you saying is there are significantly more requirements that have been added this week than we were dealing with a week ago. Is that fair to say?
That is, especially in terms of personnel and monitoring. Yes.
So, so in your opinion, are, would we still be able to meet those requirements, uh, in, in order to provide a safe atmosphere for our students to come to campus part days and, uh, do distance learning, uh, other days if a parent decided that was the model they wanted to use?
We would be able to because we have begun the work of, uh, reducing class size, of, uh, establishing completing protocols, but there are still many details that have not yet been finalized.
So last week we were planning to put the subcommittees together to finalize those details. Are those subcommittees working or are those, have those been put on hold until we make this decision tonight?
No, no, those, those, uh, subcommittees, some of them met today. Uh, those committees will work throughout.
And when do you, when do you expect those, when do you expect those details to be available?
I imagine it will take us a couple of weeks to finalize those if we're working.
If, if we continue to work on the, on the hybrid model as well as the distance learning model?
Yes.
And, and at what, what point in time do we, is it absolutely essential that we know how many students would be distance learning and how many would be interested in the hybrid model? Would that be like August 1st, like July, August 1st?
What we would need is for parents to register, not just provide a survey information, but to register for one of those two options, uh, by August 1st. Absolutely.
Okay. And so is it reasonable to think that we can provide them the specifics they're asking for, uh, a week before that?
That's next week.
I know.
That's, see, that, here, here's my problem. My big, my big problem.
I need to know, Brian. This, this is what I need to know. This is what I need to know. Do, do our parents going to have enough, enough information to make that choice? Because I, I kind of want the parents to be able to make the choice. Do I send my, uh, child to school part-time or, or does my child need to go 100% distance learning this year? And my preference would be to give that to, that decision to the parents. But are we going to be able to give them sufficient information that they can make a an intelligent decision by the time we have to have it? Uh, I guess that's the question I'm asking Dr. Throsian right now.
I, and right now I'd like, uh, for both Doctors Jackson and Kaiser to, to chime in because they've been heading up both task forces. But what I would posit is that we would target the work of the task forces not to consider, uh, the supervision of learning outside of in-school hours or out-of-school hours, but to identify those priority areas, uh, instructional support, scheduling and, uh, cleaning, disinfecting and communicating. In those four areas, we can, uh, move forward and, and likely come up with something by the end of next week.
I'm sorry, Dr. Throsian, can you, can you clarify that last statement? You're looking at these four areas in regards to the possibility of a hybrid return?
If, if we want to, uh, as, as, uh, Mr. Gillen suggested, uh, allow for parents to make the decision and have that information shared broadly by next, before they make the decision in August, we would need to finalize those plans next week, which means we need to hone in on our central function and that is the education of students. And the education of students is a complicated task. As, uh, each of you has, uh, mentioned in the past and has certainly, uh, noted in your questions, it includes, uh, some vulnerable populations, it includes identifying supports and it includes, uh, the organization of our personnel.
My my big I have nothing but kudos for our staff. You know, what was put together in one week uh when this country was shut down uh in March is phenomenal to me. It's a whole new model for education of our children. Nobody had done this before on a large scale. And and our teachers did a did a and our administrators did a did a wonderful job in putting that together. There were shortcomings, absolutely. It's been mentioned here tonight. There are things that need to be worked on. They they've they've done a great job. And here we are asking again, oh, do a great job on that and and fix the problems with that, but also plan for if we have a hybrid model where students are on campus part of the time. And and I, you know, and I almost feel guilty having to ask our staff to do this much and to create and and generate all this kind of information. Uh but you know what? Our kids are worth it. And so uh I don't want to ask the staff to do something impossible. But if we can plan for both models at this point in time, uh there was a comment in one of the letters that, well, US um LAUSD shouldn't decide for Monrovia. Well, I absolutely they're not gonna decide for Monrovia. The guys and gals sitting around this uh this uh internet meeting right now are the ones that are gonna decide. But but we're kind of short on the information ourselves, so a lot of what we're gonna have to depend on is what Dr. Therosian feels that her staff can legitimately do in in a timely manner to be ready to open on August 19th, uh one way or the other. So uh Dr. T, I I I really am leaning on your expertise and your leadership of that staff to know uh what the timeframes are to give the the parents the information they need to make a make a valid decision. So if you believe our committees can do it, then my decision will be based on we can do that now. Whether that's what we decide to do or not, we'll have to talk about it a little more, but but if you can give the parents the information they need to make the decision whether their their child is special ed or English language learner or dual immersion or all those other special categories, uh then at least I have that in my uh mind as I make my decision which way we want to which way we want to go, so. What I what I think I heard you saying is we can provide them that information. Gonna be tight. We may make a few mistakes, but we can provide them uh at least a plan for how we're gonna handle those situations in time for them to make the decision whether they go with 100% distance learning or with a hybrid model. And and we we as I as I understand it, we feel and the staff feels the teachers that are on these committees feel that if we get to August 19th and we have both a hybrid model and 100% distance learning choice, that we can deliver both products with the staff that we have. Is that correct?
We're we're not quite confident with the with the staff that we have. We believe we can do both. We don't have all of the specifics identified. We certainly are struggling with transportation. We're certainly struggling with determining our our cleaning and disinfecting schedules. And uh we certainly need uh to spend a little bit of time on the schedule and the delivery. Uh one of the the questions that is often asked is how will uh students who are in distance learning, because let's let's just as uh Vice President Wong noted, there are still a a large group of uh of parents who would like their students to come to school. How are we going to organize both models so that they are both robust? Uh I am I am concerned about that because when we first embarked upon this journey, our thought was that one model would be the more robust model. Oh, sorry, the one that had the most students enrolled in it and that uh the distance learning would be uh smaller and therefore quite manageable in terms of our resources. Now we need to shift. If we're going to offer both, it poses uh a a little more challenge in terms of how to provide that instruction uh in an authentic personalized manner to both groups if both groups are um if if evenly split.
Dr. Therosian, are your committees working as diligently on the 100% distancing as on the hybrid model?
Given the information we had yesterday from uh the Department of Public Health, uh we be and and hearing that uh from Dr. Ferrera that we should be prepared to start the school year with distance learning. We began to shift our focus to distance learning because our focus had been the the crafting of a a brand new model with the thought that very few of our students would be in distance learning.
May 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 I jump in for just one second? I I think I I would like to just start out why we're here tonight. Why did we not wait until next week at our regularly scheduled board meeting to have this discussion? And the reason why we're here tonight is because there's an a changing development um that none of us expected. And that is the resurgence with COVID-19 um in the aggressive nature that it's going right now. And and I appreciate all the work that everybody has done and I I know um and I also appreciate all the people whose time and energy is taken to ask questions um and participate in surveys. I I I just feel that if we we need to plant a flag and declare the position that we're going to be in and then give our staff enough time to be able to do the exemplary job in one pathway instead of splitting them up, trying to figure out if we can do both. And I certainly do not have a crystal ball and I and I that's not what I'm trying to get at. But if we're looking at something which is the reason why we called this special meeting tonight, we're gonna find ourselves in a crisis very soon. And the crisis will be that we will not be going back to school. How do we function? I think we should concentrate our efforts in doing a good job on that because I think it's probably more reasonable and valid to think that we aren't going to be going back to school on August the 19th than having a than having a hybrid model. Everything that I see and read and you guys all read and uh see the same things is this is not getting better just now. And in fact, it looks like it's getting worse. And as each day progresses where it looks like it's getting worse, more and more people will feel uncertain about sending their kids to school. And we need to be prepared. We did a good job getting getting schools started in March. We did not do a great job getting schools started in March on on the distance. We need to do a great job. For the reasons that we heard in oral communication tonight, there are areas where we need to work on it and it's gonna take time to work on it. And that was the reason for having the meeting tonight, so it it's not an easy discussion to have. And you're you're going against now there's a a large number of people that just took a survey and said, do it this way. I am dreadfully concerned that the information that we have in that survey will not be valid in less than two weeks. I think the 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 atmosphere that we currently find ourselves in will change those answers as people go, you know, that was then, but this is now. I don't know. I I received six and we all know that's a lot of people. Six people wanted to change their answers that got a hold of me. And it was they wanted to have their kids back on campus, but now they do not. And I don't know how many other people were like that and I don't want to make a decision based on six. But you can see the trend that's starting. And we need to be prepared to meet that trend. And that I I wanted to say that because that's the reason why we're here tonight. This is the reason why we didn't wait till next week. So I I have an offer.
You know, Rob, one one quick thing on this, and and I agree, and this is where the short amount of time we have, we need to focus our resources to do the best job we possibly can. And I think if we divide it between 100% learning, hybrid, and now there's kind of touched on doing both at the same time, um I don't think we're gonna put out the best product possible, as you're saying. Now, I look at this, I look at this from a uh a case of nobody knows the future, but if I'm gonna be wrong, which way would I rather be wrong? If I send everybody to school uh tomorrow or at that beginning or in the middle of next month and things get a lot better, uh you know, then fantastic. If if we start with long distance learning uh and they and they could have gone back to school, great. You know what? They could have done better, but if it's the other way around and we start with a hybrid model and things continue to go on the path that they're going on, we're putting a lot of people at risk. Uh and so when I look at it from a risk standpoint, uh if I'm gonna be wrong, if I'm hit, if I'm in, if I'm in the rough and I gotta take a shot, where's the safest spot for me to go? What's gonna create the least amount of problems for me if I don't hit that shot perfect? So so for me, I understand why people want to go to class. I understand all of the comments that were made when we started saying uh you know, outlining the importance of that one-on-one time. But if I'm gonna be wrong, I would rather be wrong having kids at home and having staff at home. So uh I think it is a hard, hard call. I because nobody knows. But that's that's just where I stand based on our conversation today.
And Kathy, this is the uh it's critical for me to know the this answer is how long would it take to try to say we can start, be concentrated our efforts to go distance and then miracle, miracle, we get to go back to school? Um what's the transition time to go from distance to school? How how quickly can we change gears and do that? Kathy, did you hear me?
Yes. I'm trying to to figure that out. So what we I want to go back to uh Ms. Lockaby's question of how much time have we spent on distance learning? We have not spent enough time on distance learning to be able to say this is a distance learning model that will best serve us when we pivot to a a hybrid model where we have students on campus. We do need the time to develop something that will work because uh it's important for us to craft a model that will allow us to pivot quickly. So uh in a matter of week of a week to be able to do that so that uh our students come back. Uh but we need to take some preliminary steps. Uh the hybrid model that we had been working on uh up to this point still had some gaps uh that we identified. We need to fix those. I President Hammond, when you said uh uh having a focus so that we're not dividing our focus, it will help us get to a better place so that we are entirely focused on one, one model or the other. We can still offer distance learning, but if we offer distance learning and a hybrid model and have half of our students in each that is going to be a a challenge for us to uh determine who teaches which content to whom and how. Uh our s- our staff members can be on campus, they we can uh organize because this is not a a shutdown. You know, uh the idea of asking our students or dismissing our students or asking our students to begin learning from home is simply to reduce the number of uh interactions on campus. Yeah, uh it it doesn't mean that everybody needs to go home and so I want to clarify that we can do one robustly and and well as well as the other, and we can have answers to both next week. It is going to um stretch our team uh further than they realize or um wish, especially because we we still have some summer school going uh right now and have some more going later. So we're still in operation. It's not like we don't have um other things upon where we are trying to bridge the gap between um March and today in terms of student learning and support and enrichment and intervention. So I want to just leave you with that thought of we if we need a little time to develop. I would imagine that if we crafted a great distance learning model that we could, we certainly would still need to uh finalize our work with hybrid model that we craft and we should be able to switch from the one to the next we're gonna move. And that's a long time.
Uh President Hammond? Yes, I I I just want to add some perspective here. When we dismissed students, board made that decision, we dismissed students on March 13th. We did not have any COVID diagnosis in Monrovia. Right now we have close to 400. LA County today announced numbers of over 4,000 new diagnoses. We're in a very different spot, yet we're willing to put students and yeah at risk. I I I just don't think that's a risk that we should be willing to take. We're we're in a totally different position right now, and I have to agree with Ms. uh with uh President Hammond about focusing on one way. I don't want to leave this meeting without teachers knowing how they're going to plan and without parents knowing how they're going to plan. They've got about a month to figure it out if we go to distance learning or hybrid. We need to make sure that we give our community what they're waiting to hear from us, a decision either way. That needs to happen today.
I agree.
And as I
you were talking about
One second, Ed, we got to lean.
Yeah, let's let's lean. I couldn't hear, but now I do.
You were talking about how we need time to develop things and develop the ability to be able to pivot. We're out of time. We're out of time and as Maritza said, it we need to decide now and we need to decide on one way. Um because we have a month and parents need to know, staff need to know, you need to know, we all need to know right now. And um I I think it's really important for us to look at the 100% distance because even if we were to go back physically in a hybrid model, if something happened and we had to close down, we would have to, just like we did on March March 13th, instantly all of us go to 100% distance. And I I think we really need to focus on making that robust because most likely at one point or another, we're going to need that. And I I think as Mr. Hammond said, as President Hammond said, that's why we're all here is to make a decision. As Mr. Vanti said, we need to know now and we are out of time. Um we we need to to choose a choose a path and make it robust and give our children what they're expecting because we can if we if we focus and concentrate on it.
And I will also oops, sorry, Ed, you wanted to say something?
Ed?
As I understand the decisions that we have to make, we have about four choices, I think. We can decide we're gonna absolutely gonna go on 100% distance learning on that.
We can decide we're going to, absolutely going to go on 100% distance learning on the 19th of August. We're going to go with 100% uh, a hybrid model, everybody's got to do it. We're, we, we can choose to just throw open our schools, like Orange County School Board, who's not also going to make the decisions for this school board. And we have the option to say, okay, parents can choose between the hybrid and the distance learning. Uh, those are the four choices we have to choose from. Uh, I, I want to make sure that I have the information from Dr. Therosian. Are we absolutely out of time? I mean, there's been some adamant statements here tonight. We're out of time, we have to make the decision tonight, we can't wait another week. Well, uh, we certainly don't want to wait another week, and we don't want our, our people that are planning to not plan the right thing. I think it's absolutely essential that we plan for 100% distance learning. And, and to me, that's our highest priority for any planning teams that we have. This is that we be ready to go 100% distance learning. I don't want to throw out the hybrid and say, oh, we're not going to work on it, because as soon as it's possible to go with hybrid model, I think we need to be ready to go there. Uh, you know, we can't, we can't switch gears overnight, but, uh, certainly that, that, that will be the next step in, in reopening. And, and someday this, you know, hopefully this latest shutdown that's been announced starts to bring those numbers down, and, and by August 1st, that we're, we're seeing the numbers dropping again, which means we have to keep doing what we're doing, not, not reopen too fast. Uh, and I absolutely believe we have to be ready to go 100% distance learning in uh, on August 19th, but, uh, but I need to know if, if waiting a week would, um, would help us make a different decision or not. And not, and not slow down. Absolutely don't want to slow down the process of, of defining how we're going to do distance learning this coming year.
Ed, I wanted to ask you, or maybe ask everyone to clarify.
Celine, may I? Hang on one second, uh, Maritza had a question behind Ed.
Okay, I wanted to ask something about something that Ed said, though. Because Ed said you have four choices. Can I just make sure there's, even if we do go physically back, there's always the distance learning option, correct?
Correct, absolutely.
We, we can't, if we go to hybrid, we can't force anybody to not go to distance. Correct?
That'd be, that's accurate.
Okay.
There's always, you always have the option to go, um, mountain park-ish. It's always there. Maritza?
Uh, I just wanted to say, is if, if we do end up focusing on 100% uh, distance learning, you know, this was brought up in public comment as well, but it's, it's also been part of my notes, I'm sure it's part of all of your notes is, is, um, when we did dismiss for distance learning in March, we did not hold, um, well, we held students harmless. Whatever grades they had at that latest progress report is pretty much what stayed throughout until the end of the semester, the end of the school year. Um, so there was no accountability. My daughter is going into, um, high school. Uh, she heard from many of her friends that just kind of checked out, decided, hey, my grade's pretty decent, I don't need to do anything here. Um, we had teachers that kind of checked out as well. So what I'm looking for is accountability on both parts. Whatever plan we go with, there has to be accountability, the grades need to count. Um, and, and that would be my expectation going forward.
I think before we start, if, if a straw poll amongst us, um, I, I, and I will start. I, I, I am in favor of going 100% distance. And let's find out where we stand as a board, and then start working that model to give Kathy direction. So I'll, I'll start with, I, I, I think we're going to end up 100% distance, and I think we should take all of our energy and get ready for. Brian, you're next.
Thanks, Rob.
No, no, you, you know, um, there are, there are a couple of things here to consider. And, and one of them is, um, a practical issue is that this decision may not be ours to make at the end of the day. Uh, it is, it is very possible that the state or the county, uh, dictates what's going to happen. Uh, and the probability, based on what we've seen to date with LA Unified in San Diego, is that we are going to go to 100% learning. And if that occurs, uh, I want to be able to capture every day possible to prepare for, uh, distance learning. We have a lot of issues that we need to resolve. Uh, you know, I think Monrovia was way ahead of the game to start with, because we were already looking at distance learning well before this pandemic hit, so we were better prepared on specific, uh, classes in specific areas. Now that it's being, uh, district-wide, there's a lot of things we need to tighten up. Uh, Maritza hit on, uh, you know, probably the most common uh, problems that parents have had, uh, which is consistency and rigor. So, you know, I, I would prefer that we uh, focus our time and energy on the distance learning. Um, my, my big concern, my big concern is that we went from one week, basically, of being pretty comfortable of going from a hy- of having a hybrid model, that things turned so fast that we're now talking about 100% distance learning. Well, we've got a full month before school starts, and if, again, something changes, are we going to be back here having the same conversation of going back to hybrid learning because uh, a vaccine came out or some new study came out? Um, but feet to the fire, right now, we can only make the decisions based on the information we have. Right, and so the information that I have today, uh, I would prefer that staff focus their time preparing for 100% learning.
Thanks, Brian. Maritza?
All right, um, thank you, um. It, what I do for a living with the federal government is all about risk mitigation. This is a huge red flag for me. There is too much risk here, not only for our students, but our staff. Students do not sit in a classroom by themselves, it would require instruction, it would require a teacher. That is too much risk for families, for our community, for our district. And I'm just not willing to go that route. So, um, in light of everything that's going on right now in the fluid situation, and the numbers seem to be at, you know, going up higher and higher every day, I, I don't see the trend going down any soon. I think it's prudent for us to focus on 100% learning, getting that up to par. We've learned some things, there were learning opportunities from, from the spring, let's take that, push that forward, raise the bar, and give the best possible product that we can uh, for our students in 100% distant learning.
Celine?
Um, it, our job is to educate students in the safest way possible. And I think that the safest thing for our students, for our staff, and for our community is to go to 100% distance learning right now. Um, I think not only will it keep us safe, safer, considering the recent spike. Um, so I, I, I'm thinking of the safety of the students, the safety of the staff, the safety of the student, of the community, and what kids can bring back. Because kids are going to bring that back home. I heard a report, I don't know if it was from Dr. Ferrer, uh, last week, that said if you send, um, children back to school that, with about 300 students, then you're being exposed to potentially 1,000 people. Because everybody touches someone else. So I think right now, our safest course of action is to do distance learning. And I also think that um, with the financial crisis that we're in, um, spending the money, and this is of course secondary to safety, spending the money um, for disinfecting and for, um, transportation and all of the other factors that go into having our children and our staff be on our sites physically is, um, is, is a tremendous financial burden. Um, I think that we are, I think that we do need to make the decision right now, because everyone is waiting, as a parent, I'm waiting to know. And I think we need to make a decision tonight so that we can focus on making our distance platform as robust as possible to, um, to reach out to those teachers, all of the teachers really stepped up in March, over the spring. Some were more, uh, gravitated more towards the distance platform, and we need to bring those teachers in to share their information and make this, um, a, a positive and robust um, platform that we are all proud of, but I think that we need to do that now, focus on that now.
Ed?
If we're going to vote tonight, I don't think we have any choice but to vote to go to 100% distance learning. And absolutely, you know, whether we, whether, vote tonight or not vote tonight, I believe that our staff needs to, uh, have the 100% distance learning model ready to go with all the details. That has to be number one priority, no matter what happens. Uh, because we have to be ready, because if the numbers, you know, if we go back into this semi-quarantine, stay at home, safe, stay at home, and the numbers start to go down, none of us know where we're going to be August 19th. August 19th, uh, we probably have, I mean, we'll have parents saying, oh, you idiots on the school board, look, you did it wrong. Whichever way we go tonight, I, I want to err on the side of, of, of the safety for the, for the kids. We have to go to 100% distance learning tonight. But I don't want you to lose faith, and I don't want anyone out there to lose focus on the fact that the mental health professionals are saying, you have to get kids back in school because especially the underprivileged, the kids that have to go to work with mom and dad when they're on distance learning, the kids that are abused, those that need our help the most are going to suffer by distance learning. So it's not like, oh, everybody's going to be safe. There will be more, there will be some amount of children that are more at risk because they don't come to school. However, the large majority of, uh, our children and the people they come in contact with depend on all the safeguards that we have in place. So I think tonight we have that, we have that obligation as a board to say, we're going to focus on it, if we, if, if you feel that we have to set in concrete what's going to happen on August 19th, uh, I will vote for 100% distance learning. However, I don't, I, I certainly hope that we don't direct staff to focus 100% of their effort on distance learning between now and August 19th, because I think we also a, 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 as soon as we're in a good place with our, our strategy for 100% distance learning, I think we need to start getting the hybrid model fine-tuned. So that when it comes time and that next special board meeting comes about that says, oh, we can do some, that, uh, that we have the answers, that we need to make a, make an informed vote at that time. So, yeah, I, I will vote for 100% distance learning, but with the caveat that we keep staff involved with getting ready for uh, hybrid model when it, when it's time to come.
Yeah, I wanted to mention, um, I remember asking Mr. Furtig if they went to distance learning, could they come back, and he said yes, but they prefer that it happens at a break. So like at a semester break or a trimester ba- break or, um, uh, winter break or something like that. So that's something that I wanted to remind the board, you know, if we, if we pivot, if we go back, if we change, I remember Mr. Furtig saying, um, that that's when they prefer for a change to happen.
Just, just as a point of clarification, that was um, that was definitely through the mountain park.
Hmm, independent, independent learning?
Yes, that was definitely an independent study. And so with distance learning, uh, it is
It can pivot anywhere?
For theoretically, over a weekend it can happen.
Okay.
Really, it, it could be able to happen. It's the independent study that has some different structures in place.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
Brian?
Uh, yeah, as far as what we're doing today, I, I, I want to make sure that we're, we're clear. I mean, I, I'm thinking that this is the direction we're giving uh, Dr. Therosian on where to focus her staff's energy versus putting it in writing saying August 19th, it's starting 100% learning. My, my concern is that things change quickly. I mean, they've been changing really quickly. Um, there are so many unknowns out there that that there's enough stuff to work on. Um, they've already done, staff has done a phenomenal job in putting together a hybrid model. Uh, that if things turned, things got significantly better, um, that maybe a hybrid model a month from now, again, is the way to go. 10 days ago, that was the model, that was the perfect model. Now, 10 days later, it's a horrible model. Well, 10 days from now, it could be a great model again. But there are certain things, like I had mentioned, uh, that we need to fix regardless of which model we use. I mean, regardless of which model we use, we need to figure out how to provide health or, or childcare, whether it's a full day or a half day. We need to figure out how are we going to give the students that are at risk, whether it's a half day or a full day, how are we going to give them the support that they need? How are we going to deal with the dual languages? There's a number of things that regardless of which way we go, we've got a lot of prob-, not problems, but we have a lot of things that we need to address that are going to make, uh, everybody, staff, parents, and students happier. Uh, I'm, I'm comfortable giving the direction to say, I would like you to spend all of your time or focus as if we were going to go to 100% distance learning, but not say, we are absolutely going to go there as of today. If that makes sense.
Well, i- i- if I may, I, because I don't know which direction we're going to be in in August either. If history taught me anything from the last time, it is slower to open things up than it is to close them. You can close up. It is incredibly hard to open back up. So for that reason, it's another reason why I think prepare to go distance. I share the same concerns as everybody on the board and the people who wrote in during oral communication and everybody who has sent me uh, an email or a phone call or a text message over the last week, that we need to make sure that we're taking care of the most vulnerable in our community. Um, for that reason, I mean, and we're, we're, we're going to be taking a vote here tonight, but I'd like an update of what we've been able to accomplish in the weeks since this evening in our next board meeting next week. So we don't wait a long time to see what we're doing to start shoring this up. We could have, um, lots of information coming to us on where we are on these shortages that we know exist. What are, what is our plan to make sure that, um, our, our staff is meeting with their students every day? Is, is it going to be a Zoom meeting? We, we need to know what that plan looks like. That's the reason why I'm so insistent upon giving the people enough time to plan so that when we get to the point that we have to, this is the direction that we're going in in August, that we have certainty amongst us, and the parents have certainty amongst them, that their student is going to be getting a quality education. And I think we can do that with frequent updates about what the planning is to address the things that we know are issues. And so that will be part of, of the vote tonight, that we get those, um, updates regularly, and the public gets them. I think we should put them out on every place that we can to be as transparent with people as possible. The, the thing that will get us tripped up more than anything else is letting rumors dictate what happened since we set the motion. I think we need to be out there as much as possible so that folks get the information quickly and they get the right information. and they get the right information um, when they need it. Um, so that, that, I just wanted to say that because I know that one more thing Kathy that you have to do, because we want constant updates and the community should have the same update that we get. Um, maybe we get it a minute before they do, but they should be getting it right behind us so that we all know where we are. Does anybody have anything to add?
Yes, I, I wanted to add that um, even though we're, I probably sound like I coming, I'm coming down hard, I do want to say thank you to the Dr. Throsian and the cabinet and all the staff that's been working on this. It's not easy, I, I, we get it, it's fluid, it's day to day. Yes, um, the LA Department of Health came out with that guidance finally last night. Um, and it's up to us to interpret it and apply and, and things like that. Um, we could have taken a different route at Monrovia Unified. We could have just made decisions. But it was important to include our stakeholders, which are parents, which are teachers, staff, the community. Um, the, the two surveys that went out, all the communications that have been going out, the webinars. Three, that was a full day of webinars. I'm sure Dr. Throsian was exhausted by the end of the day. And the next day, we did it in Spanish. That is all in engaging our public and being transparent with this entire process. And being transparent means, yes, we're going to get a lot of questions, we're gonna get criticisms, and that's okay. But it was important to be transparent and I hope the public realizes that's, that's the route we chose to take.
Selwyn?
Ms. Huff, are you still here?
Definitely, I'm here.
Hi, can you go back in, in the um, PowerPoint to the pie graph that showed how many students don't have? Yes, I think this one. So this is from which survey? The May or the Ju- or the July?
This is from July.
Okay. So are these the students that, to whom we gave a Chromebook at the beginning of spring and asked for it back over the summer and will um, re- give it back to them if we go to distance learning? Or is this um, a portion of our students that we weren't aware didn't have a device? How are we going to handle that red slice of pie?
Uh, we will be following up with each of the students. We just got this data today. So uh, one of the nice things of being able to, to send out those surveys through Parent Square was we know exactly who to contact and how so that we can ensure that everybody has devices and access to Wi-Fi. We, you have your names and you have your contact information.
And Ms. Huff, can you go back, I think it's back one more slide? I think that showed who had, who has and has not access to that one, Wi-Fi. So um, I know that we identified people that had access to Wi-Fi or didn't have access to Wi-Fi and didn't have devices in the spring. So um, I'd like to know by next week what that, what this info, how this information compares to the information that we had in the spring. So if there are more people now than in the spring that don't have access to Wi-Fi or more that don't have devices or something like that, because, because we had, we went on distance learning in March. If we go distance learning in August, is that the same number of people? Same number of students?
Well, whether we go, whether we go distance learning or hybrid, they still need that, that access so they can do a full, full program, right, Dr. Throsian?
Yes, we will be following up with this group as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's a critical piece that needs to be followed through, yes.
Well, um, who wants to make a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Marissa.
Sorry, no, kind of piggybacking on Ms. Lockerbie's comment regarding the Chromebooks. Um, for those students that were loaned Chromebooks and were still remaining at that same school site, they were allowed to keep the Chromebooks throughout the summer so that they could either do, be, participate in the summer school programs or use, you know, to keep up on skills and such. It, that's still held true, right? That, that, that was my understanding.
Yeah, that is true, that is absolutely true.
So the only people that returned Chromebooks were graduating seniors?
Or uh, students matriculating from elementary school to middle school or middle school to high school. Or moving schools for whatever reason.
Okay.
Yeah.
Brian?
So if we go to um, 100% learning, if we direct you to do that tonight, what is going to change as far as your direction to staff? Are, are there gonna be changes to, to what you're gonna be telling them as far as how we're gonna prioritize or what new topics need to be addressed? What areas need to be uh, shored up because we kind of put it on hold for a while? Can you give us an idea what's actually gonna be different for you and your, for your staff?
Sure, I, uh, Ms. Huff, would you move forward a couple of slides, please? Stop. Beginning here, these are the areas that we begin uh, to identify some of the changes that we'll be addressing or uh, topics that we'll be addressing. So attendance, taking attendance and uh, uh, ensuring that students are participating and engaged. Grades matter, identifying grades and a system of accountability for our students. A structure for the school day. What does that schedule look like? What can you expect for uh, the learning to occur uh, on any given day? Uh, next is what are the continuity of services? I do want to commend our um, Special Education Department. They, they did a yeoman's job in just uh, providing whatever they could through teletherapy. Now I, because we are not at stay-at-home orders, is there a way to have smaller groups come in or excuse me, students coming in individually in order to uh, complete assessments or to provide any sort of uh, supports? These are things we're gonna have to go through, IEP by IEP, um, need by need. So that gives them a little more latitude. What are we going to provide to our English learners, to our prone, uh, foster youth and to our homeless youth in terms of uh, support, linguistic support and um, additional supports and resources? Uh, and then of course, what will the planning and professional development be for our staff in terms of expectations as, and the communication that we would be making with families about academic progress and maintaining that engagement?
Uh, Ms. Huff? Dr. Throsian, pardon me, um, if I can interject on, on that point about Parent Square. I know how diligent you have been in pushing out Parent Square and um, and, and connecting all of us with it. But I do still hear from some people occasionally, Parent Square? What?
Kathy, is there a second page to this?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure you get through all of it before we start doing the questions.
Did you get, um, did?
Okay, Charles, we're live? Okay.
Yes.
So to answer your question, uh, President Hammond, during the registration process, we can certainly confirm student information. What we have found most frequently is that the information we have in our student information system, ARI's, uh, might have changed since it was, was first inputted and so we just need to update that.
Thank you. And Brian, you had a question? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to see whether we had, I think Kathy said there's a second page, right?
There is.
There we go.
Taking our lead from the budget trailer bill, making sure that there is rigor in that instruction through distance learning, just as it would in person. Making sure that there are supports designed to address the needs of our most vulnerable students and our students who are not meeting at the grade level standard. So what types of interventions are we going to have? And then ensuring as much as possible daily live interaction with teachers so that there is that constant communication and uh, allowing for students to connect with one another and maintaining those connections with schools. Uh, can you go to the next, or any questions about this slide?
Is staff going to be also defining how we're gonna provide the socio-econ- uh, socio-emotional support that some of our students need? They're being bullied, cyberbullied, that's, that's critically important, I think.
Yeah, so let's go to the next slide. Next slide after this. Subcommittees. So immediate work would be done on those schedules, on the planning and instruction, on uh, communication and screening protocols, cleaning, disinfecting, and then providing those additional supports. You know, I think that the slide uh, that references uh, counseling and wellness and mental health preceded these uh, and don't follow. But uh, to answer, oh, there we go, um, that's it. Go back one more perhaps? Yeah, I don't know where it is. Just keep advancing and we'll figure it out.
I, I just want to make sure as far as direction goes, if you're gonna focus on distance learning, uh, you know, that you had it as one of the subcommittees uh, for the dual immersion, that we, we need to have a solid game plan if it's 100%. Um, and that, and the one thing that I haven't seen on any of these is I think we need to let parents know about childcare or supervised learning of, of some sort, if it's something we can provide or cannot provide. Um, and this is one of those instances where we have 30 days, but the parents may need all 30 days to figure out what they're going to do with their kids. So um, I, I don't expect that we'll have an answer tomorrow. Um, but if we can at least keep people informed what we're working on, what the possibilities are, what they need to do, uh, how it's going to work. Um, because I, I have to guess that there is a large percentage of working families that truly are uh, struggling with the concept of what do I do with my 10-year-old while we're at work? Um, so we need to address this, this is just a reality. We, we've got to provide them with accurate information to the best of our knowledge, good or bad.
And uh, what we have done is begun uh, conversations with our Village Program, which now is a little more flexibility, when we were focused entirely on a hybrid model. Whether or not the work we've, and the discussions we've had will extend into uh, 100% distance learning is yet to be determined. But Dr. Kaiser has done an amazing job in working with both the Village Program and reaching out to our um, partners, uh, especially with the Boys and Girls Club to see how we can expand access and uh, allow our students to have some more supervision during school day. Uh, you know, we don't have all, childcare also connotes being a licensed childcare facility. I don't know what the ramifications are or what the requirements are. Uh, that's not how we do business. And so what we can do is something that we'll uh, review and Dr. Kaiser will continue those efforts. But just as uh, you noted earlier, uh, quite rightly, if we're able to target our conversations onto one model, it will help us rather than having to revisit conversations that we've already had to see, well, will it also look for this? And uh, to be ready to begin with 100% distance uh, and have these established and in place and continue the conversations in terms of childcare about whether or not that's feasible, uh, is something we can do. Uh, but many of the conversations will traverse both platforms, whether it's hybrid or distance. And so we will have some uh, things in place that will work in either platform and will, uh, will be pretty much the same. Uh, Sean, can you go to the next slide, please?
Just want to comment on that, Dr. Throsian. Yeah, if you, if you bring us something that says we can provide childcare, but we're gonna do 100% distance learning, I will need to understand why we can provide childcare but we can't provide in-class instruction. I mean.
Right, and I, I
Things to me, if we can't, if we can't do in-class, you know, if we can do childcare safely, we can do some kind of instruction too. But anyway, okay.
I, the, the numbers are different and the requirements are different for childcare facilities. Uh, they, and, and so I can explain all of that if we're able to offer anything. Uh, next slide? Here we go. Uh, while we were crafting something for a hybrid model, we are, we can now use this slide to discuss how we will uh, provide supports for uh, 100% distance. And if we begin with that in mind, we can create a model that is 100% distance and then identify how we can open it up. We will put in there um, information and work through the cyberbullying concerns. And then I don't, I think that was the last one I wanted to reference.
Selwyn?
I had a question, if you could, Ms. Huff, go back and find it. Um, I know the motion hasn't been made and the vote hasn't been uh, made yet, but if we go to distance learning, you had a slide here about including parents um, on the committees. So um, I know that's something that you, you had in your slide and I know that that was in our um, public comment also, but I think Ms. Greer is um, you know, ha- having some semblance of um, parents on these task forces. And I think as Ms. Greer mentioned, um, there are parents at, at the schools that have experience with teachers that really excelled with the distance learning that can give um, vital input to um, to the, to the task force and to the task at hand. So um, I just wanted to reiterate that you have identified the, um, the importance of including parents in the upcoming task force subcommittees.
Correct, and thank you, Ms. Huff, for uh, finding the correct slide.
Yes, thank you. Is there more to this?
Oh, go ahead, Marissa.
Yes, uh, when we were talking about the um, hotline for ARI's Parent Square issues, if someone that speaks Spanish needs assistance in that area, can that be provided through that same phone number?
Yes. Yes, there is, there is a, a Spanish translation for that.
Perfect, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Um, who wants to make the motion?
I will, I'll second.
You're gonna have to say it out loud because this isn't something that's been printed. So you get to make this one on the fly.
Oh, God, I speak extemporaneously, not as well as I'd like. I move to have us, I don't know, what do I say? Um, uh, move to 100% distance learning for
Move to 100% distance learning for August 19th? With a question mark?
And then include all the recommendations that we have provided with respect to the. All the things that we talked about that were issues, the rigor, all that stuff, that's part of the motion. Okay?
So I move to have the district move towards developing a 100% distance learning model for school opening on August 19th that includes attention to rigor, grades, attendance. What? Accountability.
Accountability.
Can you change the slide so she can read it off the slide?
Emotional help. Is there a slide for that?
Let me see.
Yes, learning slide, please.
Is that it?
No, I think, I'm sorry. There it is.
There you go.
You guys are just testing to see if I was paying attention.
So I move that we create a distance, a platform moving towards 100% distance learning for a school opening of August 18th that includes increased accountability, continuity of services to students with special needs, English language learners, foster youth, homeless youth, maintain instructional minutes and minimum day requirements, have professional development and resources to support that distance learning and regular communication with parents and guardians through Parent Square.
And before you second it, the only thing is it needs to be August the 19th, not the 18th.
Did I say the 18th? August 19th. It's got to be now. August 19th.
Okay, you're good.
Could we also add the mental health component, please?
I think I did. At some point.
You had, it's just not on this slide.
I did. I did say mental health, mentally, emotional health.
Okay, second?
Second.
Can I ask one question before I vote?
Yeah, we're going to get to that right now.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, any discussion?
Yes, if we vote yes on this motion, does that tell the parents in this community that on August 19th, we absolutely plan to start school with 100% distance learning?
That will be my first communication tomorrow.
So that's inherent in the motion?
That is the motion. That is the motion.
I thought I said we move towards developing that platform.
Putting the models to put the model together so that on August the 19th, we can be at distant learning. That's what I heard.
Yeah, what I heard wasn't clear that that's our direction. On 19th, we're going to go that way. We're putting the program together and saying we're going to implement it on the 19th is two different things to me, but I just, for those parents that didn't hear it said that's the direction, I wanted to make that clear.
I agree with that. I do think it needs to be clear. And this is, Solian, since it's your motion, are you saying?
I think that's the way I phrased it. I think I phrased it as, and we'll have to go back and look at it later, but develop a platform for 100% distance learning for August 19th. So I think it's focusing totally on a platform that supports all of these points that I mentioned so that we would be prepared for 100% distance learning on August 19th. But as we've all said so many times, everything is fluid. And if something miraculous happens before then.
If I'm a parent, I don't know what you're going to do.
Well, if I'm a parent, well, I think it's understood is that we're ready to go to distant learning. And, well, hang on. Let's have discussion. It looks like we're going to be on distant learning from August the 19th. It certainly seems to be the direction. And so that's what I've been starting planning for. We just need to make sure that we're ready to meet that to meet that's the need.
By passing this motion, we're directing Dr. Throsen to send out the direction to parents that on August 19th, we're going to distant learning. Right?
That was my second.
That doesn't require a motion. If we're giving direction. We get directed all the time, right? A motion in my mind is we are saying something in stone. If you are making a motion to that we will open the school year with 100% distance learning, I can accept that as a motion. If we're giving direction to Dr. Throsen to pursue a path to open at 100%, that in my mind is not a motion, that is a direction. So I want to be clear what is being done because I have the feeling Rob would like a definitive, this is what we're going to do. So it is unambiguous to all staff, to parents, to administrators, we need to start rolling because we've got 30 days.
Yes, you're right. And I think that the motion should be we are going to 100% distance learning on August 19th. 18th, 19th, 19th. I said 19th.
Okay.
So do I have to rephrase my motion, remove it, or have we just clarified it?
No, I think you're fine.
Yeah, I think so too.
Are you comfortable with that, Marissa, still? You're going to second it?
I second with the understanding that we are going to distance learning August 19th.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Anything you want.
True motion.
What happens if there's some miracle on the 20th?
Of which month?
Of August.
Okay.
Right.
We're doing this again.
Right.
We're doing this again.
There's some sort of miracle and, you know, at what point do we determine that we leave 100% distance learning and go to what other model? Is that down the road?
And I think that is when we're following directions of what county health is saying is safe, what the CDC is saying is safe, what all the numbers are trending. You know, we're just going into a storm right now.
I take it as this. The reason I was really listening to what you were saying, and I'm okay with starting the school year, starting August the 19th with this setup. And that the motion is not that we're going to go through the entire school year at 100% learning. So as long as we start the school at 100%, I'm good with that. Which gives us room, we know things are going to change. I think that we could probably agree if there's a transition, it'll probably be after the Christmas break or winter break, in which we would reevaluate to see where things are at. And so I just want to make sure it's clear that that option is still completely open, that as things change, we will go back to school at some point in time. Hopefully, it's going to be this school year, but it will occur. And it will require us to say this is what we're going to do. So this motion is purely how we are going to start the school year. That's it. Once we start the school year in this manner, we can adjust accordingly as health and everything else comes into play.
Exactly.
Perfect.
Any more discussion? Ms. Huff, maybe give a vote, please.
For member Gillan?
Yes.
For member Lockerbie?
Yes.
For member Travanti?
Yes.
For member Wong?
Yes.
For president Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, second item up, and this is a time-sensitive one, that's why it's here. Dr. Throsen, can you give a very brief staff report on this?
President Hammond, members of the board, AB 331 would add the completion of a course in ethnic studies based on model curriculum to high school graduation requirements starting in the 2024-2025 school year. It would permit required ethnic studies courses to be offered in any discipline and provided it is based on the ethnic studies model curriculum.
If I can, I called Assemblymember Medina's office and talked to his person on staff who was in charge of this bill. Let me give a bit of background on it. It was put in as a two-year bill, which is usually the kiss of death on a piece of legislation. But on this one, it was getting all the people to get the amendments that they were looking to have. And currently, the way it sits is that it was written as a previous bill. It was passed with overwhelming numbers in both the Assembly and the Senate. And when it got to Governor Brown's desk, he vetoed it. So it's back again now as AB 331. And it's been amended a number of times. And the thing about it that's good is that it allows ethnic studies to be done as part of a curriculum. Now, we've had and continue to have a class offering, but it's never been done as the curriculum, as a thing to graduate from. And there's been a lot of studies, and I read two of them, I did not read all of them, that talk about when people are learning about people who are like them, it becomes more meaningful for the student. And I thought particularly where we find ourselves now is our people's eyes are becoming more open is that the more that we can do to open up how other people are to other people, the better off that we're going to be as a community. And this seemed to make sense. When I talked to the people in the Assemblymember's office, they asked us if we would write a letter of support if that's the board's direction because they're ready to go to the appropriations committee at the end of the month, and they would like to have as much support as possible. And so that's the reason why it's on this agenda tonight instead of next week is because the time is of the essence. We have to draft the letter and send it if that is the board's wishes. I'll answer any question. I know Marissa knows an awful lot about AB 331 as well, and so I will defer to her.
Thank you, President Hammond. Yes, I've been doing some research myself and attending numerous events regarding AB 331. But let me give the public a little background on ethnic studies. So what is it? An article from an online magazine, tolerance.org, titled "The Value of Ethnic Studies for All Students," written by Melissa Anderson. She says, "Ethnic studies is essential because it provides young people access to the full spectrum of human knowledge, not just parts of it. Providing that knowledge is not just a gesture of token of diversity. It pays off academically in student performance and graduation rates." So what is the purpose of ethnic studies? The course emphasizes the perspectives of minority groups while allowing students from all backgrounds to better understand and appreciate how race, culture, and ethnicity and identity contribute to their experiences. Supporters say ethnic studies promotes respect and understanding about races, supports student success, and teaches critical thinking skills. In a recent story published by Dr. Ernesto Sagas, Associate Professor of Ethnic Studies at Colorado State University, says, "But ethnic studies does more than just provide hindsight into U.S. history and society. It helps us navigate the present too by instilling in our students strong research, writing, and oral skills combined with a nuanced understanding of the complexities inherent in U.S. society. Ethnic studies prepares them to become informed citizens and competitive job seekers. They will be uniquely positioned to enter a workforce that is more diverse than ever and where issues of race and gender are more relevant and fraught with potential difficulties than at any other time in recent past. They will be the persons that have the answers, team players that know how to get along. They will be the ones asking the questions that no one else is asking, but we should all be asking. As a mom of a daughter who is about to enter high school, I want her to learn about other cultures, races, and ethnicities. I want her to learn from the curriculum, but even more importantly, from her fellow classmates. I have been on a quest to learn more, but the more I learn, the more I realize how much I don't know. And I wish I would have had the opportunity to take an ethnic studies course in high school. This is why a class like this is critical for our kids, and if this resolution is passed and the AB 331 bill is passed, I want to be a guest speaker one day and talk about being a first-generation Latina and how I used to help my awalita pick strawberries in the fields in San Diego on my school vacations and what that taught me. Sure, I ate a lot of strawberries, but I also helped my grandmother fill her carts and stamps, and this is how she was paid. Just today, I attended a webinar regarding AB 331 with Assemblymember Jose Medina and Dolores Zwirb. This is the second of the series regarding AB 331. Last week, the guest speaker was Dr. Shirley Weber, Assemblymember representing District 79, which is San Diego area, who discussed the need for ethnic studies and the need to empower all students on all facts of Black history, race, and equality. One student on today's panel that spoke said ethnic studies class has taken, she has taken, has given her self-worth and awareness of other races and cultures. It has also inspired her to continue her education in ethnic studies and declaring it as her major. We have a tremendous responsibility and opportunity here to ensure this generation and future generations learn about each other's history, race, cultures, gender equality, and social current events in a safe place. We are late, but never too late to change the trajectory of education. Thank you.
Any comment?
I have one clarifying question, and this is absolutely just a clarifying question because the reason I live in Monroe is because my wife and I wanted our kids to go to diverse school where they could get to know people of every race and color. So I support the I support the theory behind this, but my question is only clarifying, and that is is there anything in this bill to reduce other requirements? This will be a requirement for graduation, right? Which means if they don't make any provisions, then that's one less elective that our high school students will be able to take because they'll be required to take this course. Is that correct? Or are they cutting something else out so they can keep a certain number of it elected?
That was part of the amendment.
It gets really tough for band members, athletes, et cetera, to get everything in. Strictly clarification question.
Yes, and my understanding is that was one of the amendments that was put in that if it is able to be done through, say, a literature class, then that would count towards it. That would count towards your ethnic studies. So they were looking, that was part of the amendment.
Great.
So it's a new course that is going to be offered, or it is a concept that is going to be woven through different curricula? That's a question. That was a question.
I am quickly reading through the bill because I'm looking for the answers there.
And it's truly.
Sorry, I can't read it.
Ethnic Studies 101? Ethnic Studies one oh one? Or as you had just mentioned, is it going to be English one oh five? Ethnic Studies? Does any question make sense?
Yeah, I I gotta, I gotta say, I think we might be overcomplicating this at this point in time. Uh, this is, this is a bill to put things out there, so this becomes part of our high school students' lives. Uh, I I'm sure we will get a fine tuning uh, to make sure that it fits within uh, in a practical manner. So I I mean, I don't want to get stuck in the minutia as as far as what the course is gonna look like or anything else. I think at this point in time, it is purely a concept uh, in whether we agree that having ethnic study is a positive for our students' lives. And I I can't.
I found it. I I knew I had read it.
Thank you.
I knew I had read it, but here it is. Um, except um, the subject of the course offerings of a local educational agency, that would be us, including charter school, "People may fulfill the requirement of clause through the completion of either of the following types of courses." So, and I'm not gonna read all that, but when it says through the following types of courses, it is allowing the student the opportunity to get the educational aspect of this in other areas of their education. Um, and it goes into great length or there, so I think that answers Ed's question. That is part of the amendment.
It does, Robert, and and Brian, if if it didn't say that, I would ask us to put that in our letter to consider uh, the number of electives available. So no, that that answers it, and I'm all for it. Send the letter.
I actually did read this, I just didn't commit to memory where it was inside the the bill.
Getting into the finer details, but I'm interested in how, you know, is it going to be ethnic studies class? Or is it going to be ethnic studies that are, that it sort of permeates through a a broad spectrum of the education, which is, those are two different ways to 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 approach it. I was just curious.
And I don't know, I I don't know how to answer that question, Celine.
Well, you sort of did.
I I I think that it's gonna permeate, I it can permeate through other uh, courses. You know, and and I I think just very quickly, I would say, if if it's in math, then you would probably have people who are not Einstein being talked about in uh, different kind of aspects of being mathematicians and so forth, so that students would identify with other people besides just the the one. I think that's where it would look. That I I I know, I think it's still gonna be a heavy lift because it has to get through the appropriation because I, just creating books for this has got to be astronomically expensive. Um, we all know how much school books cost, but that's.
Money well spent, most definitely.
I I don't disagree.
And that's money that needs to be spent on. It's it's something that we need to, we need to bring.
Uh, incidentally, if the public would like to help um, in this effort, if you want to support AB three thirty-one, Anthony Portantino is the chairperson of the Appropriations Committee in Sacramento, so I'm sure he would appreciate an email or a phone call um, or a letter of support. So that would be Anthony Portantino.
Um, is there any more questions or discussion? Uh, may I get a motion to do the letter?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in the second, uh, any more discussion? Ms. Huff, may we have a vote, please?
For member Lockerbie?
Yes.
For member Travanti?
Yes.
For member Wong?
Yes.
For member Gillan?
Yes.
For President Hammond?
Um, yes, and Kathy, you'll prepare that letter?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Um, now, if there is no further business before this bodying, we will be adjourned, and the next time we'll convene will be at our next regularly scheduled board meeting on the twenty-second. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.